Good morning to Barbara and Bill DeMaio. So far, you're the only participants plus Tracy Blaze. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, hi, Bill.
I hear you. Hi.
Hey, that's a pretty nice picture of a fish you're holding. What kind of fish is that?
That's a rainbow trout I caught in fly fishing in Colorado with my son.
Very nice.
The catch and release, catch and release program was really, really good.
Nice, nice. I spent a few hours last night watching River Monsters. So you picked my curiosity because he was showing off all the fish he caught. And some of them were really beautiful. Hey, Steve, how are you? And Jim Stewart, how are you? All right, glad you could join us. What's on your mind, folks? How are we doing?
I've unmuted myself. I'm just checking whether the audio is picking me up.
Yep, I can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you.
What's on your mind, Steve?
I was going to defer for a couple of minutes. I was sort of interested in seeing what other people had to say.
All right.
Got to check my list.
No problem. We'll get back, oh, list, geez, I'm in trouble then. We'll get back to you, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Jim, Jim Stewart, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
I can. Good morning. Happy Halloween to everyone.
I'm just listening in. Good morning to everybody.
Okay, okay. Well, we don't have much of a conversation yet. Well, Bill, since you're the veterans person, the grave agent, I think you are. I'm getting your title wrong. But can you tell us if anything is planned for this November's Veterans Day? Because I noticed it's on this month, I think the 12th or the 11th.
No, I think, well, I know you were at the meeting, the Board of Selectmen meeting, the other night, when we said that we would not be able to have the luncheon that Mike Doyle tried to set up on a quick basis. So the only thing I know of is that the letter will go out to the veterans and come from Ipswich, from Karen Tyler, explaining that it wasn't possible to have a luncheon this year because of the virus. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that at some point in time when and if things ever get back to normal, whatever normal is. So, and that's all I know. That's all I know so far.
Okay, all right, all right, good enough.
It's pretty tough. I'm not sure what's going on in terms of other communities near us. But with the virus and people keeping social distances, I think parades and gatherings are pretty much out of the question.
Yeah, that's unfortunate because I know, I think it was last fall. Yeah, or, well, it was before the virus. My husband and I, we worked at the Veterans Dinner that Donnie Jarvis organized in the Newburyport Salvation Army, which was a very nice dinner. It was very well attended. And I think everyone was, had a good meal and they appreciated the effort that went into it. So hopefully, things will get better. If Tracy was there, I wanted to ask Tracy, I saw last week, I went on the Massachusetts website to look up the numbers. And it said that Newbury only had three cases of COVID, which I thought was wonderful. But that was a week ago. And I'm just curious if we've increased our numbers. But I see Tracy's chair is empty, so, anyway. Janine, how are you?
I'm well. And I can tell you, I looked at the numbers yesterday. We have increased our numbers because we are currently at 6.4. We're in the yellow.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you for doing that. Yeah, I was running around, turning the water off yesterday at my camp up in Maine with my daughter because my husband couldn't make it. So that was a challenge. And how are things, Janine, with the golf course, since you're one of the abudders?
I haven't had any problems. Seems to be going okay. Every now and again, I hear a golf ball getting pinged, you know. But it's been okay.
Good, good, I'm glad to hear that, good.
Yeah, thanks.
And Barbara, how is, I don't know who Barbara is because it's just listed as Barbara. So we'll say hi to Barbara and hi to Eva. Eva's iPhone, I don't know who Eva is, but I feel like I've met Eva, but there's no last name, so.
Jerry?
Yes?
It's Barbara Rogers from Scotland Road.
Oh, hi, Barbara, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. And how are things on Scotland Road? How are things in the golf course, or golf, it's not a course, but.
Golf Center.
Yes, thank you. How's that going for you?
It's going fine for me. I don't have any problems. I like Eric. I think he's done a terrific job up at there.
Okay, yeah, I do too. I think he has the patience and job too, quite frankly.
That's true.
Okay. Anything else on your mind, Barbara?
No, no, I just logged in to sit and listen, really.
Are you seeing any increase in the traffic or any problem with the traffic because of the center?
I don't think any different problems. There's some speeding, but there's always been some speeding. Merrimack Valley Planning Commission put out road counter. I believe that that's what it was this past week. I think it was there from Monday to Thursday. It's now gone. So it'll be interesting to see what kind of a report they come up with.
Right. Well, I know that was discussed at the last joint selectmen's meeting with the planning board.
Yes.
You know, so they were going to do a traffic study, which is unfortunate that they didn't do it earlier. But, so we'll see what that shows. All right. And how are you, Eva?
Good, Jerry. And yes, we met through the Cushing House, Docent's.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's where.
Are you still doing that?
Well, not this year, unfortunately. Yeah, but yes, I am.
Okay.
Oh, I lost you.
Okay.
Oddly. But thank you for being here this morning. I've been having an ongoing problem with my property tax bill. And I just don't even know if the town's aware because nobody's ever responded to me. It's been going on for quite a while, so I need somebody to look into it. The last abatement I filed was three pages long. And the gentleman I spoke to on my previous abatement has not resigned.
Okay.
And I don't know if he just threw this in the trash and didn't tell anybody about it because nobody's ever responded. And I've been taxed on property that I sold way back in May of 2019. And I just paid them again, but I've received not, no abatements, although I've filed them. And I spoke to him directly, face to face, before the pandemic. And I just would like somebody to look into it because on the tax bill, I waited for my tax bill to see if the acreage had changed. And the acreage no longer appears on the tax bill. So I went to Patriot Properties, which I understand isn't always accurate. But it said clearly for the year 2020, and it still had me owning all the property. So I went to the Town Map, and Town Map said for the year 2020, and they still have me owning all that property. And it's just, the first abatement I did not file because I just transferred it. And I thought maybe the town just didn't have time to make the adjustment. So by the second time, I went in and spoke to him directly, this is the third time. And I've never even been acknowledged. So I would love it if somebody could look into that.
All right, all right. I'll see what I can do, okay?
Thank you. Because I was really unsure who to speak with. I didn't know if I should have been directing it to Tracy or to the selectmen. So this was a great opportunity for me to at least inquire.
Well, I don't know either, but, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And let's see if we can resolve it.
Yeah, well, just. Yeah, because it's.
Just something else, get you some answers.
I just paid my dad, and I shouldn't be. He just paid me online yesterday. And there's no way to do an abatement. So I haven't filed an abatement, another one.
Okay.
Should I do that? Probably should, just as.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. So I'll just file another abatement.
Do an abatement.
And hopefully, it'll.
Until they get it rectified. Because if you don't file an abatement, they may say, well, ooh, it was our error. But, ooh, you knew we had an error and you didn't file an abatement. Ooh, we can't refund you, kind of like the I.O.
Right, right. Well, it was odd too, because the last one was quite lengthy with what was not done. And I mean, I had a high engineer and a lawyer, and I did everything right. And to have it go on this wrong. I understand, though, that it was three days after this he resigned. So I don't know, like I said, if anybody else has ever seen it. So thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll see what I can do, okay? All right.
Okay, great. And it was nice to see you. And by the way, my forget-me-nots were beautiful. My forget-me-nots were beautiful, and I saved all the feet.
In a pot or outside?
Oh, no, no, outside.
Okay. Because I tried to grow them in a pot, and I got great leaves. I didn't get one flower.
Oh, no, they were beautiful.
Oh, good, good, good. A number of people have told me, yes, they put them outside and they did get nice.
Yeah.
Good. I still have a couple of packets left. Hopefully, in the spring, they'll still be good. I probably won't get as many as if I had done it right this spring. But I'll try it again. Thank you, I'm glad.
Yeah, yeah, well, I've got plenty, so.
Okay. Good, good.
Jerry.
Thank you.
This is Bill DeMaio again. If I could just add something to this conversation. I had a very engaging conversation with a gentleman, I apologize, I forgot his name, who just recently took over as the head assessor. And he was, you know, very, very clear, very good. And I'm sure if you approached the assessor's office and spoke to this gentleman, he will delve into it.
I wasn't sure if he had been replaced.
He's there.
Quite honestly. Right, because I'd never even been acknowledged.
Right. Okay.
So I will, I'll do that. I'll reach out to the new assessor with an abatement, and hopefully, it'll be resolved.
Okay, okay.
So thank you.
All right.
Sure.
Have a great day.
All right, we worked something out. All right.
Just to fill in in the moment of silence here. I think it's great that the select board is trying to grapple with having citizen concerns being discussed at the beginning of the Board of Selectmen meeting. I think it's great. I mean, we have to work through the rules and regulations of how to do that. And I know a lot of, quite a few people in town were concerned about citizens' concerns not getting. People weren't getting a chance to bring those things up.
Yeah, absolutely.
The thing that bothers me is that we're a town of 5,520 registered voters. Okay? The first Zoom meeting for citizens' concerns was done by, by. What's his name?
JR?
No, no, yeah, no, no, no.
Walker?
You, no, no.
John Walker?
No, no, in back of us.
Oh, Peter Picos.
Jerry, the selectman in back of us.
Damon Jesperson.
Damon Jesperson, a senior moment, okay? Damon had two people, two people join the meeting. Alicia Greco had the second meeting for citizens' concerns. Alicia terminated the meeting because nobody called in. The third person to have the meeting was Mike Doyle. I joined, and it was similar to today, there were five or six people. Then I think JR canceled out, but Walker had it. And Walker had, Walker had a handful, just a handful of people. And today, unfortunately, I think there's five. So, I mean, I think it's, it's good to listen to citizens' concerns. But I'm amazed that the volume of concerns doesn't seem to be all that great statistically from the records I've been keeping. And I mean, it just, and I know it became an issue at times when the meetings started just going on Zoom. But I think everyone's headed in the right direction. The board is doing the right thing right now to entertain that stuff. But the engagement of the people here, and it's either indication that they don't have concerns or they just don't want to discuss them or something. I'm just, I'm amazed by it. I'm amazed by it. I'm also amazed by some of the participation that people have in the Board of Selectmen meetings themselves. I mean, when I used to go to the town hall, if there were 20 or 25 people there, I'd be shocked.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you can, you can watch them on TV. So there's no telling how many people are watching them on TV. But I was a little disappointed. And, you know, our last Board of Selectmen meeting, nobody said anything. And I should have said it, or Tracy should have told the people, hey, don't forget, on Saturday, there's the citizens' concerns Zoom meeting where you can, you know, you can talk to the board or one of the board members. So that wasn't done. And also, I was told by somebody who was looking for the link that it was really difficult to find the link on the town website. So, and that could be it. And a lot of people are turned off by Zoom and technology. I mean, I always tune in early because I'm always afraid that I'm gonna, I'm gonna press the wrong button and whatnot. So, I mean, the Zoom meetings, the technology is, it's wonderful, but only when it works. You know what I'm saying, Bill?
No, I know. And I'm sure that my grandchildren suffer the same problem trying to do remote learning for school, as well as my son, the teacher, has had the same issues, Jerry, you know?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, in fact, my daughter this morning was telling me, well, you know, if you, you know, I can, I can, I can, you know, change your background, give, you know, choose your, you know, select your background if you remember your Zoom account number and password. And I said, well, I don't have an account number. And she couldn't get over that. I don't have an account number. I don't have a Zoom account, so I can't change my background. You know, pick, you know, the Eiffel Tower or whatever. But, yeah, the young people, they grew up with it. We old folks.
That's right. Maybe a good, maybe a good idea, the next board meeting, if someone just tells people, if we're going to continue to have these meetings on, once a month on Saturday, listen, just go to the agenda, look up the meeting, click on it, and the Zoom link is right there, and the password is right there. That's how you find it. It's not standing someplace on the town website. It's buried under the actual agenda for today's meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'm writing a little note to myself.
Yeah, but I have to give you credit today because you've actually approached the people who are engaged in the meeting this morning to solicit information from them, to ask them questions, ask them what their concerns are. And that's kind of a slight departure from some of the other meetings I've attended on Zoom. Usually, they're just waiting for someone to talk about something, and that's it. You're soliciting information from people by addressing them personally, which I commend you for.
Okay. Well, that's kind of my personality. And my, my training, I mean, ask questions and listen to the answers. Anyway.
Jerry, a good place to put that might be on the town's website, where if you just click on the town of Newbury, it right now has information about early voting and the like of the election in general. But maybe at the top across the banner could be something about how to do, how to join Zoom meetings. And then with a link, so that people would see that. Because it's more than just the select board, it's all the elected officials, another meeting here online.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Generic knowledge might be useful.
Very good. That's a good, good thing.
May I chime in with, excuse me, with something I did want to at least mention? And that's the master plan.
Yeah.
That is, you know, likely to be revived in terms of actively being worked on come 2021. And when I had seen that on the agenda for the selectmen, I followed up by contacting the planning board and Marshall Jesperson, who I knew was a member of the master plan committee. As it turns out, he had been at the meeting in part at the behest of the finance committee. And Marshall and I has always exchanged a couple of emails. And where I'm going with this is that I gather the master plan is something that is most under the purview of the planning board, but certainly, the selectmen are going to have an interest in it. But when I was just emailing with Marshall, and again, one doesn't want to put too much emphasis on a single word and say, uh-oh. But he mentioned how members of the FinCon had an interest in what the status of the master plan was because they were looking at that as something that would direct the FinCon and perhaps the town about where spending priorities might be. And my point is that, and I think this is true of master plans in general, is that the plan is just that. It's a plan. It's not a directive that you will embark upon this capital expenditure. You recognize that, yes, this is a priority, but there are many priorities. But it's, you know, needs to be taken into consideration, not necessarily done. So I think when the time comes, as the master plan moves through more writing and then eventually approval process by the planning committee, excuse me, the planning board, as well as the town meeting perhaps, we need to make clear and understand that this is a guiding light. It's not the definitive route that one must take when one develops a master plan. And that's something that's going to come up down the road, I suspect. But I often have this philosophy about how if you have a steamroller at the top of the hill, the best place to stop it is at the top of the hill and not to, it's rolling down the hill to try and get in the way of it. So.
Yeah, no, that's, those are very valid points. And apparently, we haven't had a revised master plan in a number of years. So very good points.
Right. And related to all that too is, and again, this is not meant to be critical in the sense of, oh, my God, I'm upset about this. But, you know, contacting the planning board, one goes through Martha Taylor. And Martha has so many things on her plate. I'm wondering whether, you know, since in some cases, the stuff that's on her plate is stuff that she said she's willing to do. But maybe it's time for the selectmen, excuse me, the select board to also say, gee, can we really just try and give her another assignment? Whether it be the final touches on the, you know, what was a number of things she's involved in. And things like the master plan, which are important, may be at the bottom of the pile, unfortunately. And I think they need to rise up. But that may mean that Martha has to be, shall we say, redirected. But the trick in that, of course, is that I think she really works for the planning board and Tracy, not directly for the selectmen.
No, she doesn't.
The selectmen don't have to keep on giving her the opportunity to take on even more work.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, she's the staff for the planning board. So, I mean, we really, we're not in a position to tell her what to do and what, how she does her work. Although I will say, they have so many plans going. She works really, really hard. She really is the glue that keeps the planning board together.
Right. And I agree. And that's why I'm trying to raise it as an issue, not, you know, impugn Martha's work, just that she has so much that, you know, you could say she's the ex officio member of the planning board, ex officio selectman sometimes, I think. You know, and just by way of example, I think when the selectmen, you know, expanded slightly, the police station construction committee, Martha was on that representing a certain interest. And it's like, well, gee, is that a priority compared to her working on the master plan, for instance? But again, that's my citizen concern.
Okay, all right, all right. Noted. Okay. Good morning, Catherine, how are you? You're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
There we are.
There you are. Okay, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. And I have, I just want to say that I am not technically oriented. And I started trying to get on this meeting at five minutes and nine. And half an hour later, I finally was able to get on. Just wanted to let you know, it wasn't easy to find how to get on the Zoom meeting.
You know, we were just talking about that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm so, I missed that. See, I've missed 25 minutes already. And, and.
Hope it was. And hopefully, you're muted again. Are you mute? Catherine?
Yeah, hang on.
Okay, you're there, okay. Yeah, so, and hopefully, we can, we can do something, you know, when we advertise and also on the town website about how to join a Zoom meeting and where to find the link and how to identify the password. So, you're now muted again. Catherine, we can't hear you. Catherine?
She's muted.
Okay. And I can't, well, can I unmute you?
Am I muted?
You're, you're, you're okay now. We hear you now. What did you say? We missed what you just said.
Okay, so I'm not touching anything, so I didn't, I didn't unmute myself again. Okay, so it wasn't my concern to bring that up. That was just something that just happened. But I do think that the Zoom meetings eliminate a lot of people from inputting their concerns. And I do think that having watched a lot of the Zoom meetings, they're very restrictive for citizens' concerns, not this meeting, but in general. And that was, that's something that I would like to address. And again, it just came up right now. You know, the largest population in Newbury is people over 55. And we must admit the fact that those are the people that don't care about technology. And so they don't engage in decision-making in the town. And I've heard that from a lot of people. So they just don't engage. So they are the largest population, and they are getting the smallest voice. So that's one thing I would, I would, I would ask you to look into. I know that I did hear the chairman of the planning board say that at one point that there were, they had options about how they would hear or hold a public meeting. You know, Zoom was one of them. And to postpone public hearings until after the COVID requirements were lifted. And that was an option, and they chose not to take that option. So perhaps you could look into that?
Okay, well, you know, although the Zoom meeting isn't ideal, at least, at least we are meeting. And we are at least getting the, you know, going forward with issues that have to be dealt with.
Okay, so I have to take umbrance with that because I think that you're right about they're getting looked at. But the fact of the matter is, I don't believe they're being well-resolved. Because people are not allowed to communicate with each other. They're not allowed to talk after they've talked. It's just, it's just, it is being there, it is being promoted, but I don't think it's the best way to do it. And I think that to do the regular business during the COVID, and that would be fine. But I think public hearings should be deferred until after people can get together and actually have a public meeting. And all people would be able to get involved. So that's just my two cents that I just popped up with. And I did have, I'm not sure whether Stephen has mentioned this because I just heard the very end of his talk. But my concern is related to the planning board. And first of all, I want to say that Martha is like Herculean in her work and her efforts. And instead of putting on, you know, personnel that is less important, I would say that Martha really needs help. And she should be able to pick who she needs because she knows what her needs are. So that would just be that. But beyond that, I'm concerned mostly about the master plan, which was approved in 2008 for the future of Newbury. It's very well documented. And if you look up the definition of. It's very well documented, and if you look up the definition of master plan, it's supposed to be a plan for forward thinking, and if you look at it, some of these plans suggest a 30-year forward-thinking plan for the town. And these master plans were developed from the responses of the residents. Now, I'm going to guess that not too many people, and I'm not casting any aspersions, but any, I'm going to guess that not too many people that make decisions for the town have read the master plan recently. One of the things the master plan said, and it still says, and you can see it on the website, the number one concern for the residents of Newberry is to keep the town the way it is, to minimize development, especially development that's intrusive, and I don't think that's happening. I get a lot of emails from people who are saying to me, what is all the development? We didn't want this, this is what we put into the master plan. We want to keep our town quaint, the way it is, that's why we moved here, we love it, we don't want a lot of bling. We're the anti-town. People that live in a town have been, unfortunately, there's been an onslaught of building in the towns around, those people are desperate to move someplace else. The people in Newberry move here because they like it, they love the peace, the quiet, they love the aesthetics, and unfortunately, those are qualities that cannot be quantified. Now, the flip side of that is, it seems like the town is pushing new inventory and new houses and building up and getting, in their opinion, better. Now, that opinion does not jive with the master plan, and it does not dovetail with what the people want. So that's my biggest concern. It started because I'm at 103 High Road, and I received a notice that the neighbor at 105 High Road was going to do a development. No one knew about it until I got the word out. And I've been sitting through these planning board meetings, and I have to say that I'm concerned, listening to the way the decision-making is going, and listening to the amount of time that the citizens that are in opposition have to express their opinion. Now, with that in mind, there, I have emails from about 50 residents who have contacted me and said, oh, my God, thank God you're taking this on, because we hate this idea. And they were asked to have their comments read into the record at the planning board meeting, which they did not do, and I believe it was the decision of the town council, and I do not know why, maybe she's within her rights, but I think that people's concerns, it's within their rights to have their voices heard if they write an email and a letter, if they can't get on Zoom. That did not happen. So, and then I wrote a 72-page presentation, which is also on the website of the planning board, which I've never had acknowledgement was even received by the planning board. It's never been mentioned, no one ever said, oh, well, we got your 72 pages. I seriously don't that any of them have read it, I mean, really read it, maybe they looked at the pictures, but I don't think they've really read it. And if they had this, this particular subdivision, and I, and I'm actually speaking for the future subdivisions as well, this subdivision would never have taken 18 months to get to the point where it is. But I did hear the chair say that he wants to work with the developer to see what they can do to make it work. That's not the job of the planning board. The job of the planning board is to review well-documented plans and either approve them or disapprove them. Now, in 18 months, this developer has not come up with plans that are acceptable to the planning board, and I can't understand why this is still going on. I've had emails from people who've read my 72 pages, and they've said to me, why is this even going on? They said, I don't know, but I'm going to ask at the citizens' concerns, so perhaps you can find that out. I think one of the biggest things is that the planning board has been ignoring the right-to-farm bylaw, which is a law, and it says in it, and I'm paraphrasing, I don't have it right in front of me, but I'm paraphrasing, that the right-to-farm bylaw is meant to protect and promote farming, and that it also calls for minimal interference to a farm from an abbot or a town board or a committee. Now, I have a 20-acre horse farm that I've been farming for 20 years, I have my business permit, I have my 61B, I have all of those things, and yet, the planning board has dismissed this for some reason, because if there is building next door of any type, I'll be put out of business. So that's not promoting and protecting farmlands. The reason I'll be put out of business is that I have horses, I board horses, I have polo ponies here, they cannot stand the decibels that construction would subject them to. One house being built, the decibel level of the construction is roughly 2015. The decibel level that a horse can stand is 46, huge difference. And I have that from scientific proof because that was dismissed the first time I brought it up, so I brought up the scientific evidence now. So it will definitely put me out of business, my polo pony said, if that goes through, we won't be back next year. And this is not protecting and promoting agriculture, I'm direct the butter. The houses would be 10 feet from my farm, my barn, my indoor, my outdoor, the paddocks where the horses normally stay. This alone, sorry? This alone is just, is very disconcerting, that they would, and, and, and other people have spoken up against it. David Powell, who used to be on the planning board for 10 years, very eloquently explained to the planning board why this is not an OSRD, and that the, the, I, I won't paraphrase him because I could not do him justice, but the planning board was left speechless after David explained to them why this plan was not in conformation with anything that the developer was supposed to present. And that goes right back to the, the engineering plans. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I could see right off the bat that they were totally incomplete and erroneous, they didn't even have the iron posts marked where the batteries are. So it's been a really slipshod thing, but I will tell you one more thing before I let you go, and that is, Mr. DePiero came to my house, he wanted to buy my farm or swap some frontage, so that he can make the subdivision next door easier. And I said, well, you know, after three tries, I said, I'm protecting the land, I don't really want to see it, you know, decimated with a lot of construction, so no, I'm not interested. And I said, but what makes you think that you're going to be getting a road in next door with the amount of frontage you have? And his exact quote to me made me very concerned, and he said, I get everything I want in Newberry because Newberry loves me. Now, then I see what's going on at the planning board, and I say, well, it sounds like at least the chairman wants to approve these plans. So I'm concerned, that's a really huge concern to me, not only for my own property, which of course, I'll be out of business and have to move, and I don't know what will happen to the farm, but probably somebody will buy it and put up houses, which will be terrible, you know, my, my job is to be a good steward to the property, and so, but I, I'm concerned about why some of these subdivisions are getting approved to begin with, and I'm, I'm going to be more tenacious on observing all of them from now on.
Well, I tell you, a lot of people are, are more observant now, and it's probably because of, of your work on, on trying to stop that development and the signs that are around. In fact, the latest thing to, they want to develop is the gas station on Central Street.
Oh, yes, yes.
And we got 25 letters against the Board of Selectmen, 25 letters and email against it.
Yep.
You know, and, and the, and the resounding tenor of those letters were, we want our town to be little, it's going to be, it's going to be too much, and I, you know, it's, it's too much development. So people are now paying attention, and I don't know if it's because they're home and, you know, watching Zoom meetings and watching the meetings on TV, Channel 9, you know, it gives them something to do, but people are watching, and I, I know people are appreciative of, of what you've been trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for educating me, quite frankly, about, about this issue, and I, I have heard that comment about people love me and I get everything I want.
Oh, okay.
I did hear that, yes.
Okay.
A lot of people, and, and I thank you, I thank you, okay?
Jerry, I, I want to thank you for listening to me, I really do, and I want to thank you for taking to heart that so many people are upset about the overdevelopment, and I think part of it is that there are now pockets in different sections of the town that have their own concerns, so there are more and more people that are saying, hey, look what they did over here, I can't believe what they're doing over there, how did that get approved? I mean, even just the very fact that we don't have enough water for Newberry, we don't have our own water supply.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they're, they're, they're approving these things without the necessary utilities. So I think something has to be done to bring us back to the master plan and have everyone get on board with it. Read it, get on board with it.
Yep, yep, and, and, and I, I will be reading the master plan this weekend.
I want to let you know, too, that the master plan that's online, I have the original master plan, and some of the parts of the master plan have been removed from the master plan that's online, so I will be happy to get those to you if you'd like them, the pages.
Yeah, that's, that's rather troublesome, isn't it?
Yeah.
What, what sections have been removed?
The section that the first, I think it's 19 pages, that deals with the number one concern with people in Newberry.
Oh.
Yeah. So I will get that to you if you would like me to, just let me know how to get it to you.
Absolutely, yeah. I can, you can drop it off at my house, or, or I can swing by your house?
Oh, that'd be wonderful, thank you, and, and I'm so glad, dear selectman, you're very, very, you're very, very kind, and you're really a great listener, and I have confidence that we will do something that will be good for the residents.
I try. My mother always said to me, Geraldine, be right.
You've got a smart mother.
Be right, do the right thing, that's my, and my husband tells me, you know, you can't go wrong if you do the right things.
Exactly.
I try to do that, and I, I do, I try to have, you know, transparency and, and not hide the ball and, you know, and have, and have people, you know, you know, do the, I try to do the right thing, so thank you, Catherine, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Geraldine.
And I can swing by, why don't I, why don't I say Wednesday? How about Wednesday?
Sure, sure, anytime except 3 o'clock on Wednesday would be great.
All right, and I...
And I'll have them, I'll have the pages ready for you.
Okay, all right, all right, after, how about noonish on Wednesday?
Yep, I'll put you down on the book, you know where, oh, yeah, you know where I live.
Yeah, I do, 1, 1, yeah.
103.
103, yeah, okay, all right, great, great talking with you, Catherine.
Nice talking with you, Jerry, thank you.
You're welcome, my pleasure, all right, all right. Okay, folks, who else wants to chime in? All right, have we read any good books? Okay, actually, talking about, talking of which, I did read a, a wonderful book, it's, actually, it's, it's, let me stand up for a minute. It's, it's actually this book, This Land Is Their Land.
Really?
Yeah, it's the Wampanoag Indians, Plymouth Colony, and the Troubled History of Thanksgiving, and it, it's really quite the eye-opener, and it's by Silverman, David Silverman, and it, and it goes into, into the history, it's very historical, about, about how the, the Indians were treated by the Puritans, and it's, it's, it's sad, I, I never realized that after the King Philip War, that they sold over 2,000 Indians into slavery, pathetic. And when, and, and the biggest myth is, you know, when we're little kids, and this is timely because it's now Thanksgiving or the end of the month, is that, oh, the, you know, the Indians, they helped, they helped the Puritans, well, and you think, oh, wasn't that nice of them, but you don't realize, because nobody tells you, that when the pilgrims arrived in 1616 through 1619, the pilgrims arrived in 1620, that 95% of the Indians, the Wampanoag Indians who were in Plymouth and on the Cape, 95% of them had died from a pandemic, and they don't even know what, what the disease was, they think it was smallpox, and 95% of them were dead.
Now, was that brought over by the, am I muted? I don't know, was that brought over by the pilgrim? Did they bring over the disease to the Indians?
Actually...
Or was the, were the Indians sick before they got there?
No, the pilgrims didn't bring it over, the traders, like the French...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They were, they were in Canada a lot longer and a lot earlier than the, the Puritans, so they think that they got sick from trading with the other Europeans. It, it was 95% of them wiped out, so at the time the pilgrims arrived, the Indians, they, they would actually hide from the, from the, the Indians would hide from the, the colonists, and anyway, the reason why Massasoit, the chief of the Wampanoags, helped them was because he needed allies, because the Narragansett's and the Mohawks were his enemies, he needed, he needed the white, Puritans with their guns to help him fight the other Indians who were trying to put, make them, you know, slaves and kill them in, in their Indian wars, so it's...
That's so interesting.
Very good book, if you like historical...
I do, very much into history.
It's long, it's almost 500 pages, but it's, it is a good, it's a good read, a very interesting read, so.
I think that's wonderful, I really appreciate that helpful hint, because I do love history, and I do love to know the truth. You know, transparency is really important to me.
It is.
And this is, this would be a wonderful read.
Yeah, it is, yes, Ginny.
Hi, I was curious, do you know who is responsible for starting the need assessment for the Council on Aging, and how that's going?
Um, you know, they're doing, I know they're doing the need, need assessment, because they, they, we voted for some money to do it, and I think, I don't know who's actually doing it, I think there, there was like a committee of three, three individuals, Evelyn Neuss was involved, and the other two ladies, I forget, they wrote a report, and I, I know Mike Doyle is the liaison for the Council on Aging and the Select Board.
Right.
So I think he's involved, and these other ladies and the other members of the board of the, on the Council of Aging, but I'm not certain who else.
Okay, I've read, I've read their report, but I, I understood that a formal needs assessment needed to be done, and it's been kind of hanging around, unstarted, if you will, for three or four months now.
Yeah, and I was under the impression that it had started because we had voted to do it, and, but as far as I know, the status of it, other than that, I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
All right. All right, anybody else out there want to, want to talk? Okay. Anyway. Well, and this is a good book, but it might ruin Thanksgiving for you.
No, no, the truth never ruins anything. The truth is the way, you know? And sometimes the truth isn't the happy truth, but that's life.
That's true. That is true.
Yep. So, well, I, I, you know, I feel like I could go on forever, but I don't want to take up any more time. I want to make sure that everyone that's on here gets a chance to say something, make a comment. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I don't. Well, let me ask you. I'm, I'm under the impression that this supposed development right beside you. There are going to be big, big, big buildings, but very little land. Is that correct? Almost like a California-style building.
Yeah, yes. The, well, I can't comment on the size of the houses. Memory serves me that each one will be greater than 2,100 square feet. So that's not a huge house. That's more of a modest home. But the, the, this is one of the things that the developer did, which is in question. When you do a development, you need to do what's called a yield plan, which shows you how many lots you can get by right. So there were, there's an existing house there. And if my memory serves me correctly, they were able to get five additional lots. So that would mean basically six house lots. Well, what they did was they, they made duplex lots. So they got five duplex lots, having two, you know, a duplex, two units on one. And what they did for the next plan was they made it, they, they split everything. And instead of duplexes, they had individual, single-family homes. And they doubled the number of lots they could get to 12. And I don't believe that that's what the bylaw at least implies. Anyway, that's a concern. So right now, the plan that's on the table right now is, he came back, he, he wants, now he wants 13 homes. And two of them will be in the flood zone, close to the AC/EC recharge area and the Great Swamp, which is another thing. But the ones that will be built up closest to the road here, that's going to be approximately four and a half acres because they're having a, a community septic system down behind it. And I can't imagine that won't take up an acre. I mean, it's going to be a big system. So, so there, the lots themselves are very small. And there's only 10 feet between each house. Each house has a side setback of 10 feet. So if you have houses side by side, someone puts a fence up right down the middle, then to get from your front yard to your backyard, you've got 10 feet. So my, my thought when they were discussing the fire department last week was that how do you get a fire truck in the back of the house if it's so close together? Anyway, so the other thing that's, rumor that's gone around for quite a while that I wanted to clarify is that Mr. DePiero has, in the past, had an excellent reputation. I don't know personally, but people have said he builds very nice houses. When he was over at my house, I asked him what kind of houses he was going to build. And he said, "Oh, I'm not building them." I said, "You're not going to build houses?" He goes, "Oh, no, I'm not a builder. I'm just strictly development now." I said, "Well, who will be building them?" He said, "I don't know. Whoever buys the subdivision from me." So some people are saying, "Well, gee, it'd be much nicer to have Mark DePiero build a beautiful house in the back there than we don't know what we're going to get." Well, you don't know what you're going to get. Because Mr. DePiero told me he is not doing any more building. So that's a misconception that he is doing the building. He is not. So he's just going to flip the property.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
So that's kind of something that's important to, to know that, you know, that he's... Anyway, it's just, it's, it's not working, it's not being fair. You got to play by the rules.
Yeah, you've got a lot of concerns, yeah.
Really do, yeah. And people have been calling me. They can email me anytime if they have a question because I really do have, you know, a lot of information from watching, listening, and, and researching, a lot of research.
You want to, you want to tell your email so people?
Oh, yeah, sure. Actually, my email is my name, Catherine O'Brien, at Comcast.net. And I'll spell my name because it's spelled a little, oh, you've got it up there right. It's K-A-T-H-R-Y-N-O-B-R-I-E-N at Comcast.net. And I've tried to get the word out on Facebook, but I have so much information to give people that if they did want to send me their email address, I have about 40 other people who've sent me their email address and I'm going to email them updates because it's too long to put on Facebook. And not all of it is happy information. So I'd, I'd like to be able to email the community. If they would like to, just shoot me an email. I'll put them on the list and I'll let them know if they didn't get to the meeting, what happened. And certainly I will let them know how we have a friend in the Selectmen, and that's you.
All right. James, Jimmy Stewart, you've been quiet.
Oh.
Yes, I have just been listening and, you know, if anything had come up about our favorite topic, to be able to weigh in or not as appropriate. But that didn't happen, so I, I think I'm good. And I see Steve Manjins got his hand up to speak.
Okay, Steve, what's, thank you, Jim. Steve, what's on your mind?
One of the comments, speaking of emails, is I recall briefly the town website had the email addresses for each individual select person. And since then, that's gone away. It may be security issues caught up in that issue, but it'd be nice if you could bring it back.
Yeah, well, I had, I had an issue with that because I had, I had a problem with my Selectmen's email. The IT director went in and changed my password without telling me what it was. And so I was frozen out of it. So she did it twice. So I, after that, I said, "Forget it." Because I don't want anyone going in and changing my password, having, you know, no one telling me what my password is because then I want to be the only one using my email. So I won't use the town's email. I, I use my own email.
Right. And I can understand why you've done that. I wouldn't like that either. And I guess that gets into, well, I think it's unfortunate. I would appreciate if the other Selectmen would consider making an email address available. And certainly it doesn't have to be your regularly, normally-used email account, but you could set up a, you know, a Gmail account or something like that. There would just be, you'd know that that, this was town business that was coming your way from the citizens.
You can't, you can't email the, the Selectmen at, just, it's the Selectmen@townofnewberry.com. And the Julie O'Brien, the administrative assistant for the Board, she will, she will notify us if somebody emails us at that site specifically. So we do get, we do get it if you, if you use that one.
Right, well, that's good. But of course, and again, if, if you send an email on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you have to wait for Julie to come back in. And in that sense, I think it's a delay in terms of citizens' concerns coming up. You know, again, I can come up with hypothetical examples. This is always a good one. You know, a lot of stuff can happen on Plum Island on the weekend when Town Hall is closed. But if you want to try and get in touch with the powers that be, whether it be the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, whatever, you can't get to them because there's no email address. Anyway, that's, I can understand why it may be difficult to make it happen. But I thought I would just raise it as a, a concern about being able to reach our elected officials in a timely manner. So thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, it's 10 o'clock, folks.
Can I just, could I just piggyback on to Stephen's comment just quickly? It is really hard to reach someone at the Town Hall, to tell them something. And if you email them something, you really need to reply that they received your email. That's not happening. They just need to say, "I got it. I'm working on it." But to have absolutely no communication back from the email you sent, and, and really, sometimes you just don't know how to get in touch with people. So they're rather insulated now.
Yeah, especially with COVID. I mean, it's like, it's like going to Town Hall. It's like it's locked down. You have to knock on doors once you, once you get in, into the front door. Okay. Well, folks, it's, it's after 10 o'clock. Yes, Janine? Oh, that's a goodbye? All right. Goodbye, Catherine, Janine.
Goodbye, everybody. Nice to meet all of you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good day.
All right, have a great weekend. Don't bring your back shoveling. Not that there's that much.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.